and I would like to introduce to you Pastor Dave Riley, Cornerstone Baptist Church, McDonough. Reverend Riley, thanks for being here.
Thank you, thank you. It's an honor to be here. I'm actually Cornerstone Bible Church and Sacred Journey Hospice. I'm the chaplain there as well. So, let's pray together. Father, we thank you for this time that we've all gathered in your presence, and we thank you, Father, for the good things that will happen this morning. We pray, God, your blessing on this meeting and this time. Pray for the commissioners and those who've gathered here. And we ask, God, for your blessing of wisdom, your blessing, Lord, of progress, and your blessing of unity. And we thank you, God, that with you, all things are possible, and we trust you, and we know that you're with us. So, God bless this time, bless this meeting, those who've gathered. And again, Lord, we thank you for your presence, and we pray all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. If you would, pastor to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, under which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. I'm sure nine o'clock, Henry County Board of Commissioners, nine AM Tuesday, August four, 2015, meet and come to order. I would like to entertain an amendment to the agenda. And if you flip a page and go to Technology Services, which is the beginning, the first one after the end of Consent Agenda seven, and let's make a beep, and we're going to have a resolution that, in essence, is going to authorize installing fiber-optic data communication connections from the old Splosh Building to the old McDonough Police Building and the associated budget amendment to do that. Just for briefing, sometime this year, we traded some land for the use of the old McDonough City Hall, so we will be using that. And we just found out last week that of all the other county buildings, as fiber optic ready, this building is not fiber optic. So, unless somebody else has any amendments to the agenda, I would ask that somebody move to approve the agenda as amended. Have a motion from District Three?
Second.
Second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Right now, we have three five-minute speakers. Okay, the rule is, citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during the portion of the meeting. All persons wished to speak for the public comment must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comment speaker form, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. First, have Mr. Bill Tony, Water Authority. Mr. Tony.
Good morning. Bill Tony, sixteen fifty-two, Highway one fifty-five, North McDonough. I've been looking into the Water Authority, and I'm getting more questions than I am answers. Every time I ask a question, they want to charge me twenty-three dollars an hour to give me an answer, which I feel like is totally unfair. But since two thousand and eight, Mr. Farmer, in charge of the Water Authority, he, since two thousand and eight, there's nothing, there's no records of any pay increases or anything else. He's been getting five percent a year forever, as far as I know. And this is the last one that I could come up with, or they would supply me, was in two thousand and eight. They said in two thousand and eight, they didn't keep these records anymore. So, what I'd like to ask is, Mr. Smith, I would like for you to apply or ask for a grand jury investigation into the Water Authority. It appears to me that you've got the fox looking over the hen house. Everything over there, I talked to Mr. Farmer, and he says, "We don't want to get into the political arena. We don't want you all over there." So, then I start looking, and I feel like I've got enough stuff in what I've already found out to, for there to be an investigation. Something's not right over there. You've got these, when you've got a man making over a quarter million dollars a year, and nobody knows anything about it, and not a one of you, if there's one of you that knew that he was making that kind of money, I wish you'd raise your hand. You ain't got to talk to me. You just got to raise your hand. But that's ridiculous, and salaries over there are just crazy. They charging me, the lowest-paid person that they could get to give me any information was over twenty-three dollars an hour. That's ridiculous. Again, Mr. Smith, I'm asking you, as CEO and chairman, to go for an investigation on the Water Authority. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll recognize Mr. Carl Swenson.
Thank you. Okay, I'm Carl Swenson, forty-three, Thurman Road, in Stockbridge, the unincorporated part. I'm here today to talk about securities violations that are occurring right now within the county. Whether you are aware of it or not, doesn't matter. This county is paying, at last count, almost eight hundred thousand dollars to a company, which is a for-profit company called Association County Commissioners of Georgia. That company takes our tax dollars, which are supposed to be for bonding of all of the various departments, and they are not, I repeat, not, registered with the Securities and Exchange Commission. That is a direct violation of law here in the state. And that is going to the first page that I gave you, and the first three are from a Wall Street Journal report that goes to show that these securities violations are being prosecuted. And I hope that you will come clean.
Turn around.
I'm sorry? Oh, shoot.
I mean, I can't do that.
Okay. What I'm showing you here is just one of several pages that you have, and it goes to the fact that there are innumerable companies associated with Henry County. They are all incorporated. They are not actually acting in the fiduciary responsibility that people that were elected to office are acting as. They are all using corporate veils in order to allegedly protect themselves. The next page after that is directly from the codes of the Constitution, or codes of, yeah, Constitution, I believe. But I direct your attention towards the Section Two of the bottom of Chapter Nine on this, on this page. It goes to misprison a felony. You are being made aware of a crime in your county, and as such, it is your responsibility to do something about it. Pretty simple, pretty straightforward. In addition to that, what I give you is an opportunity, each and every one of you, an opportunity to renounce your affiliations with any of the corporate offices you are involved with, and return to the civil authority that you were elected to be. Right now, you are not the civil authority. You are acting in fraud. You can redeem yourselves, but you cannot do so under the advice of your county attorneys and all of the attorneys, because those are the very same people that are telling you through the Association of County Commissioners that this is okay. You are being led by the criminals in this county. You can either continue to do so, or formal charges, again, will be charged. Now, the problem here is that if we level charges, who do we level to? The sheriff? Police chief? They're all incorporated, and all under the protection of your county attorney, all under the protection of your court. When it takes five years for a liability case to get before a judge, I think you can accrue a lot of reserves, a lot of reserves, which is what you're doing right now. They're taking money from the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to recognize David Blunt. If you would, come to podium, state your name, please, for record.
Morning, gentlemen. David Blunt, ninety-eight turns Golden Lane, will be done in Georgia, three oh two five two. Just want to talk as a citizen about public safety and what your immediate plan is to help with protection. I have parents that live out on St. Abbot's Road, and if the station on Up Church is out, the next closest one is a far distance away. If that rescue is out, the engine that normally carries medication, sometimes is staffed with paramedics and sometimes not. So, my concern, I'm here for is basically because of my parents, and, you know, there's a lot of people leaving on both fire and police, and I want to know what you're planning on, how you're going to stop that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes your public comment. Next, we'll have the consent agenda. The following agenda items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Before voting on the consent agenda, I will provide an opportunity for the board to add or delete some items. Number one, Henry County Development Authority Resolution supporting a letter to Department of Community Affairs requesting less developed census tract designation for census tract seven zero three point zero six and seven zero four point zero three. This is pertains to, we trying to rehabilitate since the closing of, we lost four hundred and fifty jobs in the city of McDonough from a brick strat, and we also lost a hundred and fifty jobs down in local scrub. Technology Services Resolution approving network and voice hardware infrastructure annual maintenance with the ADCAP. Transit, we have a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the fiscal Y twenty sixteen Department of Human Service Coordinated Transportation Grant for elderly persons and people with disability. Public Safety Resolution pertaining to the appointment to the West Georgia Emergency Medical Service Council. At this time here, is there any commissioner that'd like to add to or delete any of these items under Consent Agenda? If not, will somebody move that we approve the resolutions under Consent Agenda?
So move.
Have a motion, District Three?
Second.
Second from, I've forgotten. Who said, second from District One? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Technology Service Resolution approving Phase One of the ERP Project Management Professional Service Contract, be Exhibit Five for the board.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. This is one I'm very excited about to present to you guys. This resolution is to approve the ERP Project Management Professional Services Contract Phase One. Phase One, the purpose of this Phase One is, is project management effort to conduct activities between Henry County and Tyler Technologies to negotiate a software contract and develop a statement of work that specifically meets the needs of the county. Phase Two will follow this, and Phase Two will be actually the software implementation. This is to get rid of the green screen project here. We're going to upgrade our, our systems. Phase One is a list of deliberals, is develop a project organization structure, develop a detailed project plan, establish collaboration environment. For four, Phase Two, establish expectations, visions, include new technologies and changes in business processes, obtain and review documentations on current and desired ERP environment for Phase Two, access the county's current technology infrastructure and ERP readiness for Phase Two, conduct all the departmental interviews and establish current business processes and prepare and issue opportunities matrix for Phase Two, develop ERP software specifications for Tyler Technologies, develop a scope document for the implementation phase, conduct a GAAP analysis, assess the county readiness for implementation of Phase Two, and conduct contract negotiations with Tyler Technologies. This is a total cost of seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars, and it is in the current budget. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions or comments? Now, we have a resolution to approve the ERP Project Management Professional Services Contract, Phase One. If somebody moving that direction?
So move.
Have a motion, District Three?
Second.
Second, District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you. Next, we'll have the, this is the add-on. We have a resolution to approve a new fiber data communication connection from the old Splosh Building to the old McDonough Police Building and associated budget amendment. Skip.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, sir. Henry County is leasing the old McDonough Police Building from the city of McDonough, and we need to extend our county data communications into this building for the county employees and their data and communications need. Comtech is a sole provider for our data and fiber optic cabling, and they will install twelve strands of multimode fiber from our old Splosh Building into the old McDonough Police Building and terminate all the items in there. Network equipment will be provided by AdCap, which is a sole source provider for our network hardware and support, and they will be providing the additional equipment there. The actual fiber pool is eleven thousand, six hundred, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and the network equipment is six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-three cents. And there's a budget amendment to move this money into our budget for this.
Anybody have any comments or questions about this? If not, somebody move, we adopt a resolution to approve a new fiber data communication connection from the old Splosh Building to the old McDonough Police Building and associated budget amendments. Have a motion, District Three? Second, District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Resolution approving a bid award for installations of two solar-powered flashing beacons and two ADA ramps for the crosswalk improvements. Good morning, Terry.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members. Bethany Baptist Church requested the installation of a crosswalk on North Bethany Road. Church parking lot is located on the west side of the road with the church being on the east side of the road, creating a pedestrian movement across North Bethany Road. Henry County DOT requested a study be done to determine what, if any, action should be done to improve this pedestrian safety or pedestrian movement. The study recommended installing a crosswalk on North Bethany Road with crosswalk signs with rectangular rapid flashing beacons on each approach. Seal bids were solicited for the installation of the two solar-powered rectangular rapid flashing beacons and two ADA ramps for the crosswalk. This project was bid through the purchasing department. Two bids were received. Staff recommends award to Wilburn Engineering, the low bidder in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. Completion time is forty-five days with liquidated damages. Bid assessed at eighty-four dollars per day if this schedule is not met, and the funds aren't available in the DOT budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Have a resolution approving a bid award installation of two solar-powered flashing beacons and two ADA ramps for the crosswalk improvements for Bethany Baptist Church. Somebody move in that direction. Have a motion, District Three?
Second.
Second, District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you, Chairman, Board.
Thank you. Resolution authorized in Henry County Police Department to purchase uniforms in the amount of seventy-five thousand, eight hundred dollars utilizing an annual contract, Hotel Charlie fourteen dash ten with Galls Incorporated. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. This resolution authorizes the police department to purchase, purchase uniforms in the amount of seventy-five thousand, eight hundred dollars, utilizing the annual contract HC fourteen dash ten with Galls Incorporated. Henry County Police Department requests approval to utilize an existing annual contract HC fourteen ten with Galls Incorporated for the open purchase order of uniforms in the amount of seventy-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. Funds have been budgeted and approved in the two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget for this open purchase order.
Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, does somebody move, we adopt, approve the resolution authorized in Henry County Police Department to purchase uniforms in the amount of seventy-five thousand, eight hundred dollars utilizing annual contract HC fourteen dash ten with Galls Incorporated?
So move.
Have a motion, District One. Second, District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Resolution approving the purchase of two Belgium Malinois Canines from Canine Concepts Incorporated. Chief.
Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners, on June sixth, two thousand and fifteen, the Henry County Police Department and the Board of Commissioners retired Belgian Malinois Canine Pipo for a medical condition. Police Department Command Staff allocated two thousand fifteen, sixteen budget for two dual-purpose patrol and narcotics canines. Police Department currently has two working canines patrolling the county. Due to the reduced number of canines patrolling, this places a hardship on the canine and the officers. The department requests the purchase of two additional canines, which will allow the department to have four total. We've retired two this year total. Canine Concepts Incorporated in Louisiana provides canines and handler training and has been the main source of purchasing for the department's patrol and narcotics dogs for the last twenty-one years. They produce the best canines some of our officers have ever worked. The cost to purchase a dual-purpose canine is fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. The police department is requesting to spend twenty-nine thousand dollars for the purchase of two total canines. That also includes the training of the handlers and certification as well. Thank you.
Anybody got any questions or comments?
Major.
Yes, sir.
Major, I've had the pleasure of actually seeing the dogs that were slotted to get, I believe, Leroy and Lucas are the two canines. Seem to be pretty hard dogs. Looking forward to getting them. Just excited to get these canines back in, because you're right, we're down to two canines now, and they're working, you know, overtime, really filling, filling some holes. So, you know, at one time, we had six years ago, and I think four may be a good number. And I'm excited to see them, and I'm looking forward to seeing Leroy and Lucas coming into the county and the service they'll provide.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Now, we have a resolution approving the purchase of two Belgian Malinois dogs. Somebody move in that direction?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, District Four?
Second.
Second, District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you, sir.
Resolution created substitute crossing guards positions with no impact to the budget.
Yes, sir. Hello again. The Henry County Police Department currently employs twenty-seven part-time personnel as crossing guards for forty-two schools in Henry County. This position is responsible for the safe and efficient movement of vehicles and pedestrians from school zones to aid and assist the children and adults at school crossings. In the absence of one of the crossing guards, there are no substitutes on hand, and we currently have to pull a uniformed officer off the road to handle the crossing. Since the crossing guards will assume the duties of the absent crossing guard, there will be no budget impact for the substitute crossing guards. So, when one of them's out, the other one fills in, and so there's no additional cost for the budget.
Any further discussion? Any comments?
Yes, sir. Major, there's been some concern expressed from some of the crossing guards, and I've noticed as well. The safety vests that they wear are getting a bit tattered and not as bright, so let's make sure to keep them in, you know, keep them safe.
Yes, sir.
So, just, let's make sure their safety vests are up to, up standards. I know DOT actually requires us to have...
Yes, sir. I'll report back to you after we do the, our equipment inspection, and let you know what the current conditions are.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Now, we have a resolution creating substitute crossing guard position with no impact to the budget. Nobody move in that direction?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, District Four?
Second.
Second, District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes for June the second, two thousand and fifteen, is published in our book. Does anybody have any comments, or if not, initiate a motion to approve the minutes of June the second?
So move.
Have a motion, District Three, to approve the minutes of June the second. Have a second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Chairman and commission comments. Chairman has no comments. I yield the floor to any commissioner that'd like to make a comment this time. Having none, I yield the floor to the county manager. County manager, do you have any comments at this time you'd like to share?
No, sir.
Now, I yield the floor to the county attorney. Do you have any comments, sir?
No, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Oh, did you have any comments?
You want me to bring up the, the Stockwell?
Yeah, we need to. You want to, you want to explain, I distributed to the board the, the work that Commissioner Prince did on the Stockbridge Police Services Agreement.
Are you going to talk about that?
I've, I've suggested...
Could you come up to the podium?
Well, I was going to suggest Commissioner Prince do so. He knows, he knows the numbers and the methodology much better than I do.
Attorney, just comment. District Four. I accept that. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes District Four.
Thank you, Chairman. This is really just to catch up, so the citizens know what's going on with the, the police contract, the SDS agreement in the city of Stockbridge. Over the last few weeks since we had the last meeting, I've sat down and crunched some numbers, and so everyone will know what I did. I actually took man-hours that were countable, meaning that man-hours that we could back up with, with documentation of how many man-hours we've actually spent working for the city of Stockbridge, in the city of Stockbridge, responding to calls in the city of Stockbridge, writing tickets for the city of Stockbridge, investigating burglaries, murders, things of this nature in the city of Stockbridge. And I did this and did a man-hour count, and then actually multiplied the man-hours by the charge for the officer. And it came out that roughly, I'm going to use rough numbers here, so we don't get into minutia, roughly, we spent about two million dollars policing the city of Stockbridge. In addition to that, I did manpower. I went through and did how many manpower that we have in the city of Stockbridge. And to go over some of those facts and what we have, we have a total of nine zones that touch the city. We have two zones that are all encompass the city, and then seven other zones that touch, go into the city partial. Now, in those zones, we have a total of thirteen officers that work full-time in the city of Stockbridge. Then we have forty-five officers that actually work, the zones touch the, the city of Stockbridge. So, in a cycle, we have fifty-eight officers that work inside the city. Now, doing this way with manpower hours, I came up that we spent about two million dollars policing the city of Stockbridge. Then what we did was we took and averaged the fact that we spend fifteen percent of our resources in the city of Stockbridge, the total number of man-hours that we spend in the city of Stockbridge, and the total manpower that we spend in the city of Stockbridge, and we came up with about two point one million dollars is what we spent. and we came up with about two-point-one million dollars is what we spend policing the city of Stockbridge when we averaged all, all those out. Now, the city of Stockbridge pays one-point-two million from taxes, and that's your, the citizens, you and the city of Stockbridge pay one-point-two million in your property taxes. The city also pays us an additional five hundred thousand dollars. Now, I would like to rebut the five hundred thousand dollars, saying that last year, our officers generated about one-point-one million dollars for the city. Now, the city doesn't get to put all that in their coffers, they do, they do have to pay for their court costs and other things like that, but the long and the short of it is, we're basically just about paying for ourselves in the city. Now, I thought we were coming close to an agreement, and we were almost right there. The, the shortfall of the city is about, about nine hundred thousand dollars, and that's what we had put in the proposal, is to get nine hundred thousand. But then I received a proposal from the city, and in addition to the, the heightened level of service that we provide in the city already, they had requested two additional twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week officers. To make this happen, that takes thirteen officers. It had been presented that at first that it was just six officers, but when you actually do the math, officers have time off, they have funeral leave and things of this nature. Anyway, we ran the calculations on the additional officers, and it was nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to provide two more additional officers, twenty-four-seven in the city. Now, it goes on, they, they want us to provide a couple of other things for bailiffs and others, but we could probably use the two officers. If we were to pass this with the deficit that we already have, and again, the city paying about one-point-seven, they offered to pay one-point-eight the next year. But with this, in addition to the nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for the additional officers, we would come out right about one-point-eight million dollars, excuse me, one-point-one million in deficit. To cover the one-point-one million in deficit for the officers in the city of Stockbridge, we would have to raise the taxes to everybody in the county. And I don't think it's real fair for somebody in Ola, somebody in Kellytown, to pay the one-point-one million to cover the gap, so the city of Stockbridge can have the additional officers. I, I don't see this coming to an end. I'm guessing we're gonna extend this thing today if we, if we need to, but we will be heading to mediation, and I'll be fighting for both the citizens of the city of Stockbridge to make sure that they have the best police service that we can provide, but I'll also be fighting for the citizens of Henry County to make sure that we're not overpaying what they need to be paying. So, again, we've provided all this data to the, to the city. I'm sure they're digesting it now, and the board's got it as well. But, again, we're, we're, we're working the numbers, and we're trying to come to a resolution. So, that, that's, that's pretty much where we're at.
Mr. Chairman, we have already extended the agreement through the date of mediation. We have tentatively scheduled mediation, I believe it's in the first week of September, so I don't think there's any action required to further extend today. We've extended the existing agreement. The, the last meeting, we discussed that we extended it through the date of mediation. So, we're, we're extended ample time to get into mediation, see if we can work it out.
Let me suggest this.
Yes, sir.
Number one is, I'm not accustomed to, when we're in the middle of negotiating, to, to share either party's assumption. Now, at this point here, I, I will not make any comments, 'cause I'm satisfied, this is recorded, this is public, and anything we say will be used against us, or could be used against us in a court of law. And as you just stated, I think we, we may end up that way. So, having said that, I won't have no comment, but I yield the floor to District Two.
I just wanted to make sure that, 'cause in our inboxes, all the commissioners got a letter from the mayor dated July twenty-eighth, so that was only a few days ago. Commissioner Prince, was that, I mean, I just want, everybody seen this? Okay. I just wanted to, okay.
Anybody else have any comment? You have any more comments, counsel?
No, sir.
Okay. Upcoming meeting, August eighteenth, six-thirty PM is a regular meeting. September the first, nine o'clock is a regular meeting. I'm told we need to go into litigation for acquisition of real estate, was that one of them?
We have pending litigation, real estate, and, I understand, personnel.
Personnel matters. Okay. If somebody would move to adjourn into executive session in accordance with a provision of OCGA Section fifty dash thirteen dash three and other applicable laws impertinence to the advice of the county attorney for the purposes of discussing acquisition of real estate, pending and/or potential litigation, and personnel matters, if somebody would move in that direction?
So moved.
Have a motion, District Three. Second District One, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. We will adjourn the public session, we will go into executive session as the law allows, and we will come back out whenever you see us, 'cause I have no idea how long this will last. Thank you so much.